Yeah.
Head, really?
Yeah. It's um, you know. See, I don't have to worry about why is it something that I do just has like this in the work. No, it's okay.
Yeah, no, I could, but.
Good evening, and I'd like to call this meeting municipal council to order at six thirty-two. Please join me for a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of September second, ninth, and sixteenth.
Second.
Motion is in order. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We will now go on to a public hearing, so Madam Clerk, if you could please.
Let me suspend a moment. Okay.
Thank you. We will go into the first public hearing, please.
Public hearings for October seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Public hearing regarding proposed amendments to the revised ordinances of the City of Attleboro, sections nine dash thirty-seven and nine dash thirty-five. So the Attleboro Police will have jurisdiction of the animal control in place of the Superintendent of Parks. Full amendment available during business hours at the City Council office or at councilcityofattleboro.us.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to speak in favor?
Good evening, Captain. Do you want to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance changes?
Evening, ma'am.
Hello. Shall I commence?
Yes, please.
So, awesome. All right, good. So I'm here to speak in support of the ordinance changes that were proposed related to moving the jurisdiction to oversee the Animal Control Department to the Police Department. I want to give you a little background and context. Apparently, years ago, maybe a couple of decades ago, it used to be in the Police Department. Then it went to the Health Department until around two thousand and one, when it was then transferred to the Parks Department. In the last, what was it, Derek? Early twenty-four, I started getting some communications from concerned residents about dangerous dog hearings and the proceedings. I spoke to Derek about it, and we began researching the process by which we conduct these hearings. Dangerous dog handing hearings are dictated, the process of them is dictated in mass general law. Because if you're going to, animals are considered personal property, and you cannot deprive an owner of their property, personal property, in the absence of due process. So there are legal processes. I learned after talking to Derek that we hadn't always had necessarily a formalized approach to the process. So working together with the solicitor, we revised the dangerous dog complaint form. We gave Derek some more guidance on how to conduct these hearings, because they are, in fact, legal findings, and we've had one of late, yes, Derek, that actually went to court. Again, because a dog is a personal property, and you can't deprive somebody of it. So after much contemplation and appreciation and appreciating the importance of these issues, it occurred to me that it should go back to police. It is essentially a public safety matter for several reasons. One, it is essentially a law enforcement function, right? We have to enforce the laws. Two, the whole point of these dangerous dog hearings in particular is to keep the residents of the community safe, right? That's a public safety function by definition. Animal control officers respond to any immediate threats to the public or safety. Dangerous dogs are that. They have a lot of jurisdiction. And also appreciating the formality of the process involved, I think that it being back in the Police Department makes a lot of sense for several, for those reasons and more. The ordinance changes are required simply because the ordinance stipulates several, stipulates several times that the animal control officer is the superintendent of the Park Department, so we need to change that to Police Chief. And for those reasons and more, Derek can speak to the increasing number of these cases that we're getting, the seriousness which they are taken by not only the victims of the dog bites, but the dog owners. These are really important things. There's a few dog lovers on this council. I have two myself. And it's important. It's important to the dog owners and certainly important to the victims of these cases which are increasing. So for those reasons and more, but fundamentally, my appeal is that it's a public safety issue, and I think it deserves and should be under the jurisdiction of the Attleboro Police Department. I don't think that Chief will be the one necessarily overseeing this. I expect he'll assign the relevant duties for the enforcement of it. But I think that makes sense for several reasons, so I respectfully ask for your consideration of just putting it back where it was many years ago. Kind of straightforward, so I don't want to belabor the point. If anybody has any general questions.
Thank you, ma'am. So just a reminder, public hearings before clarifying questions, not statements. Council Holmes, no, Miss Angelo, did you have a question?
Yes, sir.
Council Holmes.
Thank you. Do you think that this will be a cost to the city in any way?
No, not an increased cost. We're already, like Derek's time, the animal control officers, that's not changing, right? It's Derek's time. It'll just shift to a staff member at the Attleboro Police Department to do what Derek's essentially been doing. You know, and I actually think, and I, first of all, none of this is any commentary on the job that Derek or the ACOs do. This is not about the quality of their work. It's about that fundamentally, it's a public safety initiative. I do think, though, having it under the auspices of the Police Department will send a slightly different messages in some cases to folks about the import of these situations, about the import of acknowledging if your dog has behavior issues or aggression, it's serious matters with serious consequences, and Derek can tell you about some of the recent cases and the harm that's been done to some of our residents, so. But, but Council Holmes, I don't anticipate any increase of costs.
Additional questions for the mayor? Mayor, thank you very much for coming down. Do we have anyone else to speak in favor?
Good evening, councilors. Derek Corsi, Superintendent of Parks. As the mayor was stating, we had our revision of the dangerous dog hearing procedures. Since that revision was made, we've had about seven dangerous dog cases in the city. I still have two more pending, and then I just got notified of another dog bite today, so that's going to be a third. Each one of these cases isn't a quick deal. We have to have a public hearing. That hearing is held at my office. It usually takes around an hour. After that hearing is complete, I have to write basically a ruling on this. It's similar to a ruling a lawyer would make. It has to be held up in court. Those rulings are about six to seven pages long, and they have to be gone through with a fine-tooth comb. It's not some sort of form that I can input information in and do it quickly. So it is fairly time-consuming for me to do. I also have no legal or a law background, I'm a tree guy. So, you know, I am able to do it, but I don't believe that, you know, it's my expertise. In addition to that, all, all police, all calls for animal control end up going through dispatch, whether they're during the workday or after hours, so it makes sense to combine the two as one unit. As many of you may know, animal control is a subsidiary of the Police Department in many towns. I would say a majority of the cities and towns. It just makes sense to have it that way.
Any questions for Superintendent Corsi, Vice President Dolan?
Do you foresee any other changes besides the dangerous dogs and such? Do you foresee any other changes that would affect Animal Control's job with handing this over?
I think it would just be status quo. I can't speak to that. That would be an answer for the Police Chief, but I believe, you know, things are running fine when it comes to animal control, the calls responded to. It would just make things a lot more cohesive, and it would take my time and allocate it towards the parks, forestry, and zoo. Whereas I'm spending a lot of time writing these documents, holding these hearings. It's a time-consuming process, and while I have such a small staff, there's no one I can hand it off to. This gets handed back to me. So that's, that's kind of the issue, you know, we've run into. It's not a quick procedure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Tavares.
Prior to two thousand and twenty-four, were there any hearings held for these sorts of cases that you dealt with?
Since I've been here, there was just one, and it was kind of relatively quick. We held the hearing, and the person who owned the dog voluntarily offered to put the dog down after, you know, the incident. But the process wasn't formalized. A lot of people didn't know you could actually file these type of complaints. Since it's been formalized, there's been a lot more of them. And I think since COVID, I feel like there's more of these incidents in general. A lot of people got dogs during COVID. They were home all the time. Oh, yeah, it's a great idea. Now people are going back to their daily, normal lives, and, you know, the dogs left at home. The dogs with people that don't know how to handle the dog, and that's when we have a lot more of these incidents. So that's, that's the way I see it.
Additional questions? Derek, how many of these do you see on a monthly basis, and how much of your time is dedicated to it?
I would say it's seasonal. So the month of March, we had a one-week span where it was crazy. We had five incidents in a one-week span. Since then, it's, it's more sporadic. It's seasonal. I would say probably if you averaged it out, one to two per month. This month, we've had two pop up. It's, it really is a seasonal thing. During the winter, it's quiet. There's not a lot of people outside. There's not a lot of dogs interacting with each other. You know, that first step of spring, like in the March, you know, everyone's back out, and that's where a lot of these problems happen.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Derek.
Thank you, Derek.
Do we have anyone else to speak in favor? Do we have anyone to speak against? Do we have anyone to speak neither for nor against? Seeing none, Council Holmes, do you see any reason to keep this public hearing open?
I do not.
Okay. I declare that public hearing closed. And Madam Clerk, will you please read these notes for the second public hearing?
Certainly. Public hearing regarding entering into a three-year employment contract for the positions of Deputy Police Chief and Deputy Fire Chief and amend city ordinances and compensation plan accordingly.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to speak in favor?
Good evening. I'm Scott Lechance. I'm the Fire Chief for the City of Attleboro. I'm here to speak in favor of the proposed changes to the ordinance. I have a few notes. I think it's important to understand the reason for the proposed contract. Currently, with the old exempt rules and regulations for public safety people, we had eleven steps. The pay grades was clearly defined. There was a three percent increase between steps, and there were also COLAs based on years of, COLAs based on, you know, the vote of the council, and the steps based on years of service. With the new classification plan, now it's a salary range with performance evaluations. I am actually a big proponent of performance evaluations. I think they're a great idea. I think they're a great tool. But I think they present tremendous problems for public safety for higher-ranking officials. And the reason why is I think that for public safety, for myself, and I'll just speak for the Fire Department. This, this would be for the Assistant Fire Chief, the Deputy Chief. It's important that we can speak freely on matters of public safety. We can't have the concern that if I say something that's not popular, that it's going to affect our livelihood. It's never been an issue in my sixteen years as chief, so I don't want to make it sound like there's been a problem. But I do think it creates the appearance of a potential problem, a conflict, that I think we should really work hard to steer against. The three-year contract gives the same options. Basically, the contract is the performance evaluation. So at the end of the contract, if there's an issue, you know, the administration in this honorable body certainly has the opportunity to address it that way. I think that's one part. I think the other part is we are still civil service, public safety, and there are different regulations in civil service related to performance evaluations that the city would need to address to actually impose them on public safety personnel through the civil service. Not that it's insurmountable, but I don't think that it's probably the best practice. If you look at most municipalities, especially cities, contracts like this are actually very common. I think the language possibly can be a little bit misleading. It's, it's technically a compensation contract, because civil service employees, their appointments are not subject to, like other department heads, they're not subject to approval by the council. That's all civil service law, so the appointing authority in this case is the mayor has all of the authority to make those appointments. So it's really not an employment contract, as we typically think of it. It's really more of a compensation contract. The, the other part that I would say too is that currently, my experience in the Fire Department is when people want to get promoted, one of the things that they do look at is, you know, salary, just being realistic. Right now, in the union, they know what their salaries are. They know what the contracts allow them to get, you know, for compensation. And when people get promoted, I think it's in the best interest of the city to ensure that there's some kind of a structure in place that employees at least know, you know, where they will be and what they need to do to get to certain areas. So I, I think for all of those reasons, that I think it's in the best interest of the city and public safety to, to approve this proposed change to the ordinance. Just happy to answer any questions if anybody has them.
Do we have any questions for Chief Lechance? All right. Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else to speak in favor?
Good evening. Lynn Daven, HR Director for the city. I don't want to belabor the point, because I think the chief did a great job of explaining, but I do want to say the same applies to police as well. We have the same issues in regards to the compensation. Civil service law does apply to them as well. So I do think it's a really good thing for all parties involved to go forward. If anyone has any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone to speak against? I mean, anyone else to speak in favor? Do we have anyone to speak against? Anyone to speak neither for nor against? Seeing none, Council Holmes, do you see any reason to keep this public hearing open?
I do not.
Thank you very much. We declare that public hearing closed. We will go on to a reading of the third and final public hearing of the evening.
Public hearing for the proposed of setting the tax classification for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to speak in favor? Thank you. Do we have anyone to speak in favor?
Good evening, councilors. I am Julie Hobson, Chief Assessor for the city. Um, here with my board, represented by Don Smith and Nancy Maguire Heath. Um, I'm here to provide you with information, um, necessary to decide tax policy for the city of Attleboro. Uh, the purpose of the classification hearing is to consider the tax rate options available to the city. Assessors provide information relevant to making such a decision and the fiscal effect of the available alternatives. City council with the approval of the mayor must decide whether to reduce the share of the tax levy paid by the residential property owners and shift those taxes to commercial, industrial, and personal property. And if so, they must vote the residential factor, which results in a percentage shift. Under MGL Chapter 58, Section 1A, the residential class must pay at least 65% of its full fair cash value share percentage of the levy, while the CIP class cannot pay more than 150% of its full fair cash share percentage. Chapter 200 of the Acts of 1988 allowed for a shift up to 175%, provided that the residential class does not pay less than 50% of its share percentage, and not less than the lowest historic residential percentage share. This year, the Department of Revenue has determined that the minimum residential factor is .92332234, which allows for a shift of up to 1.50 or 150%. Uh, the council may also consider, um, two other tax policies, uh, which would be a residential exemption or a small commercial exemption. Each year, uh, the city looks at this. Um, when it comes to the residential exemption, the city of Attleboro's residential class is predominantly owner-occupied. Um, we normally see residential exemptions in cities and towns that have more, um, um, rental properties and things like that. It, in Attleboro, it would affect the mobile home parks and the apartment buildings, um, by increasing the residential tax rate, and that would affect a lot of the seniors that live in, in those. So we, we have never done the residential exemption, and we don't really recommend it. And as far as the small commercial exemption, um, there are about 50 parcels in the city of Attleboro that would benefit from the small commercial exemption. A lot of those, um, are not owner-occupied, and the businesses that run them are, are not owners of the buildings that they're in. I think the personal property exemption that the city offers, um, the city council has voted to exempt up to 10,000. That's the maximum that we can exempt for personal property. That benefits the small business owners much more. Um, and again, the city of Attleboro has not ever, um, used the small commercial exemption, and it's, it's not recommended. Before any tax policy can be decided, um, all properties must be certified and classified to full fair cash value as of January 1st. The fiscal year 2026 assessments have a valuation date of January 1st, 2025. This is our approved LA4 form from the Gateway System. Department of Revenue has approved our values. Um, you'll see the, the parcel counts and the values for each class there. Um, just something of note, the, the single-family residential, which is the 101 class, increased by 38 parcels. Um, that class as a whole went up 7.7%. Um, condominiums increased, um, by 32 parcels, and that went up about 9.3%. So how do we determine values? 924 deeds were recorded within the city of Attleboro in 2024. From those transfers, the assessor's office inspected and analyzed qualified sales as follows. Not going to go through every number, but we look at all of the single-family sales. And in, in this case, in this year, the average sale price was $575,303, which is up, up 8.7% from last year. So the residential values continue to appreciate condominiums. Uh, the average sale price was 371,132. That was up 11.9% from last year. The graph that I have below just shows how the sales price are reflected in the assessed values. You can see how each year the assessed values move along with where the sales price is at. That's what determines your value. My next chart is what I call my kitchen sink chart. It just basically shows everything for the last five years. How the, um, total class values have changed. Um, you can see the total class residential, like I said, went up 7.63%. Commercial, industrial, and personal property went up 1.81%. Um, this also is reflective of how, when the values go up, the tax rate comes down. Um, the values are increasing at a much higher rate than the total levy is increasing, and that's why you see a decrease in the tax rate. But this basically shows you the historical information for all of the classes, what the levy was, what the shift was, what the tax rates were for the last five years. The levy is partly determined by new growth. New growth is property being assessed for the first time. The assessed value of the new property is converted into tax dollars, and those tax dollars are added to the levy, levy limit as allowed under Proposition 2 and 1/2. As part of this year's interim adjustment, about 200, 2,200 building permits were processed and inspected for data changes. You'll see that the new growth continues to be mainly made up of residential and personal property, and it's basically half and half. Some of the growth highlights this year were 34 new single-family, um, dwellings that were completed. Um, there will continue to be some more development there with single-family dwellings. We have a couple of developments on Pike Avenue, another that's going to be coming on, um, County and Reed Streets. Uh, 34, uh, 32 new condominiums were built over on Pond Street. That was a, a big highlight for the residential growth. Um, as far as commercial, we had a couple of new warehouses that were built over on County Street. The commercial continues to be, you know, at a slower rate of development than, than the residential. The personal property, we had, um, some significant growth there with the utilities again, and we did have a solar development that came online, um, that was about $18 million in assets, so that was good. Um, there were 150 new accounts that were picked up on personal property, um, with our company that we're using. We're still continuing to use RRC to do our personal property inspections. Determining the levy limit under Proposition 2 and 1/2, the maximum amount a city or town may levy or raise through taxation is limited under Proposition 2 and 1/2. Again, it doesn't mean that each individual taxpayer's bill can't go up more than 2 and 1/2%. It means the amount the city can raise through taxation cannot go up more than 2 and 1/2% plus new growth plus any debt exclusion. So this year, we calculated it by taking the prior year's levy limit, the Proposition 2 and 1/2 increase of 2,326, new growth of 1,567,481, add in the debt exclusion of 6,979,647, gives you the total amount that may be levied of 103,923,507. Using that levy limit and taking the total value of the city, which is 7,969,309, no, 7 billion 969 million 309,000, uh, would, if you divide the total amount that may be levied by the total value, you would have a single tax rate of $13.04 for the city. This is where your decision comes in, whether to shift some of that burden onto the additional burden onto the commercial and industrial off of the residential class, thereby having a split tax rate. This chart shows you different, it's not every single tax shift that's available. That comes later in the presentation. There's about three pages worth, um, but this is just a sampling of the shifts. And using the average single-family, um, assessed value and then the median single-family assessed value, and the same for commercial, industrial, shows you the impact of each tax bill and the percentage change that they would see based on the different shifts. There are 110 communities in Massachusetts with dual tax rates. Attleboro began using a dual tax system in 1983. And in 2012, an ad hoc committee was formed to study the tax classification within the city and make a recommendation as to long-term policy for its split rate. The committee then recommended that the best long-range policy was to set the single-family home tax rate as to yield the same average tax bill increase as the overall tax levy increase on a percentage basis. Based on that policy, the, the tax shift would be around 1.42%, which would yield, I think it was 4.22% increase to the average single-family tax bill. The top 10 taxpayers for fiscal year 2026 continue to be commercial properties, mainly utilities are, they're always in, in the top three. Um, there are the shopping centers and then a couple of industrial. There's one residential property that are the apartments over at Attleboro Wall Street. Um, I just, I took the commercial, industrial, and per, personal property values and put them into a chart so you could see how those classes are basically broken down and what the, what the higher, uh, payers are in total. The Bristol County tax rate comparison again has Attleboro right in the middle as far as average tax bills for single-family homes. We've been there as long as I've been doing this, and, um, I don't see it shifting too much, too rapidly. That's where we're at. And then the last three pages are all of the tax shifts available to choose from. And then I made a, a graph, a chart showing the impact on the tax rates according to the shift, just to, to give you a visual of how much the commercial tax rate will change for each change in the residential tax rate per shift. And that is it. Everything I have. Um, I, if you have questions now, I'm happy to answer them. If, I know it's a lot of information to look through. My door is always open. My, I'll answer my telephone and my emails if things come up in the future.
Do we have any questions for the city assessor? Mr. Tavares?
Julie, I just had a couple of questions here, uh, and if I may, President Delcio.
You may.
Got a few. Um, so on page four, um, the graph that shows, um, various types of, uh, residential housing, what, what constitutes a qualified sale, just out of curiosity?
A qualified sale would be an arms-length transaction.
Okay. And how is that determined?
So it would be determined as a, a willing buyer and a willing seller with no outside consequences or no outside, um, that's the word I want. It, it's a, it's an on-market transaction for a fair market price.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is how do you determine its, its arms-length? Is it, is, is there a criteria used for, um, sale price relative to what that particular, um, property is, or, like, how would you know?
We would check to see if it, if it were on MLS, if it were listed. We also send out sales, um, verification questionnaires, um, get the information that way.
Um, and then the, the sheet about new growth, um, so when you mentioned that, um, this includes properties that are being assessed for the first time, that's considered new What, what does that mean for, like, so for example, if there was, I don't know, like a, a piece of raw land that was then, you know, someone built a single family on, is, is that counted as part of new, new growth, um, because the house is now being assessed for the first time as opposed to the lot, or?
Correct. Right. The improvement would be the new, the new growth. Right. Um, in addition, if somebody took a building permit out and just put an addition on, that addition is new growth. Um, if something were exempt, not taxed before, and was bought by a taxable entity, that is new growth.
Would that also include, um, properties that have, like, converted uses, for example, commercial to residential or something like that?
It depends on this, on the scope of the project. If it's a complete rehab of a building, that can be considered new growth. If you're basically demolishing the interior and rebuilding it, that's new growth.
Okay. I'll have my questions.
All right. Thank you. Additional questions? What I would ask, Councilor, is, um, potentially, um, asking the assessor if you're able to come next week to committee, uh, just in case some questions do arise. I think, because the, great job as always. Lot of information, so if you don't mind that time.
And can we close the public?
Well, let's go through this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Do we have anyone else to speak in favor? Do we have anyone to speak against? Do we have anyone to speak neither for nor against?
Sorry, I have to jump the gun.
You were trying to send me a message.
No, no.
Uh, good evening, President Delcio and members of the, uh, narrow committee. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Bill Larson. I live at Fairway Drive in Attleboro. I also run a business, uh, 90 Olive Street. Uh, so I am both a member of your residential group and your commercial group. Just so you're aware, uh, I am also a member of the school committee, and I'm a member of the One City One Budget Committee, but I'm simply here speaking as a resident, uh, commercial owner tonight. What you have in front of you, we keep calling it a, a shift. It's, it's really a premium because you're going to create a base rate, and you're going to establish what percentage premium you're going to charge commercial, personal property, and industrial. So I'd like to have you think of it as both a shift, but it's also a, it's a premium increase, uh, because commercial, we get the same, uh, advantages as residents do from the city. We just happen to pay 30-some-odd, 40% more for it, the services that the city provides. We do use the services, so it's not like that we don't. And you're in a tough spot. Uh, the city has definitely financial challenges. I mean, you were talking about them last week when you were discussing the personnel, even just adding unfunded personnel to a list. You have major financial decisions coming in your future. But the city should also be working, and Council, you have a part of this obligation, to work to maximize every possible opportunity to increase your commercial base, your industrial base. You had an opportunity a few months ago, for whatever reason, you decided not to take advantage of that. Uh, that's your, your call, but I think you really need to evaluate these decisions based on, this is your funding source. The decision you make in the next couple of weeks is going to have such a huge impact on all your budget hearings next spring. Everything that happens next spring is going to be dictated by the decision that you make in the next two weeks. Yeah, and you have to kind of connect those dots. My personal wish is that the shift, or the premium, was 25%. I think that's fair. I think industrial, commercial can pay more than the residents. I've always said that. I think 35 and 40% premium for the same services is a little high. I don't envy your decision, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Mr. Lawson? Mr. Lawson, thank you as always.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else to speak neither for nor against? Seeing none, Mr. Cobus, would you now like to close this hearing?
Yes, please.
All right. I declare that public hearing closed. I would entertain a motion to enter into committee of the whole.
Second.
Thank you. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're now in committee of the whole. If anyone wishes to address the municipal council. Please make your way to the podium. Good evening.
I have a matter of, well, it's kind of a safety issue and I've addressed this committee before, over four years ago, I came here urging that they suspend the license of another dealership, Greenlight Auto, which is now M&amp;J Auto. I thought the situation was resolved, but recently I found that it was not resolved. I had someone come into my business and tell me that they were of a problem with the dealership and they were having major issues with the dealership. And I said, what dealership? And they said, M&amp;J Auto. And I said, where is this dealership? And they said, it's down on Route 1 in South Attleboro. And I said, who did you talk to? And he said, John Jihad, which is the old owner of Greenlight Auto, which I had a problem with over, just over four years ago. And I thought I shut that off, sorry. So the issues are very substantial. Me and my daughter could have been injured or killed in his product, which he falsified negligently in the ad that it was a drivable, insurable vehicle. And it was not. When I called the registry motor vehicles, I found that, that the title wasn't even coming, one was even ordered, and that it was a salvage vehicle. So how we got away with it was, at the time, he said when I came down there, I had something written out, but I'm just going to talk off the fly because I know so much about it. I went down there, well, let me just tell you back, me and my daughter, she, she, we were going through some tough times at the time. And she went through a life-changing event, which was very traumatizing to her. And in that year, I had very little money because I had just come out of a major custody battle, it cost me over $130,000 and a lot more than that, besides my time and things I had to lose to get that monies. So it was a tough time for us and I was trying to get through it and I'd saved money, you know, progressively over time. And I was excited and gave her hope that we were going to go do stuff because we're stuck at home and, you know, and she was going through a tough time and I made her promises of all the places, bringing the things we're going to do and see. And I went down to check out this car I saw on the ads and, and online.
So I just want to remind you, you have a total of four minutes, we're at the two-minute mark now.
That's all?
Yes.
Oh, then we got problems because this is going to go way over that. Then to make a short story, shorter, a long story, much shorter. I've already addressed this committee on this matter and come to find out, well, Laura, Laura, I think you might be familiar with this case, honestly, because when I came to this committee to tell them about the problems of this dealership, we agreed that they would take away the license pending that they take care of their problems and reimburse all the victims. And I'd come to find out years later, the issues have not been resolved due to this person coming into my business and telling about their problems, finding out the same business owner. And then when I called, I realized that the business had been, all they did was change the name and change his last name from Jihad with a J to Jihad with a G, which is very underhanded and slimy, to get away from paying me or any other people he had robbed previously. And so I questioned, I called, I, I got ahold of the new, one of the new committee board meetings, Nick, Nick, yeah, Nick Lavoy. And so I told him about the situation and wanted to get some resolve, I didn't hear back from him, so I left him another message, he didn't return that call. So then I was urged to contact the mayor's office, which she told me to come here and address the situation. And so now I'm here addressing the situation, but I'm here to tell you that that dealership almost killed me and my daughter and they robbed us through deceptive, misleading ads saying that it was a drivable registered car, which it's not. They almost got us killed because the rear end, it came off, it was on its way imminently to come off the rear end, which we got in an argument and I called the police. And that's another issue that I don't have time for, but the police were looking at me saying that I was the aggressor, which I was not, and, but I don't have enough time for that. Find another board meeting and address that problem. But anyway, I'm back here urging you to look at their license because I have found many, many comments and reviews that suggest that they're up to the same business as usual.
Thank you, sir.
It's a big problem.
You said you had a written statement prepared?
Oh, yeah, I have a lot written out here.
Okay, so if you could, if you could leave it with Virginia, the administrative assistant, she can get it.
Right here?
To us, yeah, she, you can walk right around, you can walk right through there, okay?
We'll save more time, honestly, because it's.
I just need your name and address for the record, if you don't mind.
Jesse Sheridan, and it's 96 North Washington Street in North Attleboro.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Dolan?
Thank you. So when we spoke before, it was a while ago.
Yes.
And I'm old, so I might not remember everything. Did, did you send an email? Because typically the best thing to do is to send an email with like a timeline of everything that's transpired.
Oh, yeah.
So can I assume you're here because of that person that came into your business and, and said this guy's name and they had an issue with it? So you, so it clicked like, oh, this is the same guy?
Well, I gave up on the idea I was going to get reimbursed. And I said, at least no one else is going to have to go through what I went through myself with my daughter and their families and anyone else on the road. And then he told me that and yes, it sparked me to contact Nick and here.
Okay, yeah, and, and if you have too much to leave Virginia, what I?
I do. I think you might want to see me about this because it's a ticking time bomb.
Yeah, so a timeline and details is, is super helpful because, you know.
Oh, I got details, yeah. I got it all, I was very efficient, I spent so much of my life.
I remember, I, I remember speaking to you numerous times. You do tattoos, right?
I do, well, I own the shop now.
But yeah, timeline of, I, I'll have to look through my emails to see, if you could leave your email address with Virginia too?
Okay.
I'll look through my emails to see what our correspondence was back then. But, you know, I, I.
What I'll ask Laura, just, is for Councillor Lavoy to reach out to Mr. Sheridan and then any information you have to share through Virginia with him.
Yeah, I just wanted him to leave his email so I can look through my emails because, you know, who knows what was in the subject fields, but, yeah, I mean, we definitely take this seriously and we, and we have, we have taken people to task on their practices and they use cost sales, but I, but I do remember you.
It's a pretty serious event.
Understood.
And look at interviews more, so.
Thank you for coming.
No problem.
So anything you get or have, if you could send?
Yeah, I will, I'll look through everything.
Could I talk to someone besides the council meeting on the boards because I have a lot, it's just too much for tonight, sir?
Certainly, we'll go through Mr. Lavoy and we can set up another meeting, we could have you potentially come to a committee meeting, there's other options we have for you.
Beautiful, okay, awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have anyone else to speak at committee of the whole? Please make your way to the podium, be in your name and address for the record.
My name is John Robinson, I live at 317 Newport Avenue. Good evening, council, President Delcio and members of the city council. I come before you tonight in good faith to speak as a concerned citizen of the city of Attleboro. There are circulating reports online regarding potential conduct involving one of our sitting councils-at-large and a member of the school committee. Out of respect for this council and the residents we serve, I'm asking the body consider formally requesting the release of any related police documents, including reports and body camera footage to review and determine if any misconduct or abuse of power may have occurred involving individuals who hold public office. Our residents deserve full transparency from those entrusted to lead them. As, I want to make it clear that at the highest levels of city government, we must always hold ourselves and one another to the highest ethical standards. I respectfully ask the council to exercise any and all lawful authority available to investigate this matter and to make relevant information from incidents on Locust Street, Newport Avenue, public in accordance with our city charter and public record laws. No elected official, regardless of their position, should ever be seen as above the law. Our pursuit of truth, accountability, and transparency must always come first if we wish to restore and maintain the trust of the people of Attleboro. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson, are you speaking as a resident or as a candidate?
Speaking as a resident.
Thank you. I just want to be clear, thank you for coming down, but a lot of what you ask is outside of the purview of the council, but we will.
So where do we hold our elected officials accountable?
Well, I think you're bringing concerns here, but.
That I've done tonight.
Yep, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Hello, Mr. Robinson, my name is Kate Jackson. I am the records officer of the ci, in the city. So if you would like to send me a request, you can send it to my email.
Okay.
All right. And now it's.
A request for?
For the public records request. I handle all of them.
Are we going to make them public throughout our city or is that something that I would have to do personally?
You would, you would, whatever you do with it is what you do.
So we don't hold each other accountable or we just allow this to go on and we don't hold each other accountable for the things that we do outside this room? Just trying to, just trying to figure out who holds who accountable when they do things outside of this room that's unethical?
So if you're saying there's an ethical violation, what I can do is, as the president, I can reach out to the Ethics Commission and see, and take guidance from them.
I, I would really appreciate that because somewhere, somehow, if people do things that are incorrect, they should be held accountable. It shouldn't be me as a citizen to come forward to make that happen.
So you.
I bring it to you, I bring it forward to you and that's something you people should make happen.
So we will take it from here? We will take a look at it and see what we are able to do and not able to do?
Excellent.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You have a good evening.
You too. Do we have anyone else to speak at committee of the whole? I would entertain a motion to arise.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we have risen from committee of the whole. We'll now go into a reading of the committee reports. And as always, we'll start with, oh, yeah, no, no, I'm sorry, you're right. Had my papers out of order. We're going to a reading of the mayor's communication and the clerk's communication.
October 7th, 2025, Dear Municipal Council, I respectfully submit a communication from Attleboro Public Schools Director of Finance Brittany Corrella regarding the following fiscal year 25 fiscal obligations that were not received in time to be processed in the normal fiscal year 25 business cycle. $2.15 to Blick Dick, $611 to Bloom H&amp;L, $4,830 Easter Seals of Mass, $504 to Learnwell, $2,097 to Maxim, $2,241.29 to UMass Medical, and $0.27 to Oriental Trading, total of Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body to authorize the school department to pay these previous year's school bills totaling $10,285.71.
Finance Committee, please.
In anticipation of the Attleboro Cultural Council fiscal year 26 allocation from the Massachusetts Cultural Council in the amount of $39,500, I respectfully request your honorable body to approve expending such funds and any future grant amendments in accordance with Chapter 1, Section 12 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Attleboro. Please note that there is no matching requirement.
Finance Committee, please.
I respectfully submit for confirmation by your honorable body the appointment of David Wood to fill an expired term on the contributory retirement board, term to expire February 2029.
Human Resources, uh, Human Resources Committee, please.
For your information, I regret to inform you, your honorable body, we have received the resignation of Amanda Soldanya from the planning board. Please join me in thanking Ms. Soldanya for her service to the city.
Thank you, Amanda, for your service. That's an FYI to our councillors.
U.S. Health officials continue to warn Americans about the risk of kratom, an opioid-related ingredient increasingly adding to energy drinks, gummies, and supplements sold at gas stations and convenience stores, and a growing number of local municipalities in the Commonwealth and beyond have taken action to restrict or prohibit the sale of kratom products. This matter was originally brought to my attention by Vice President Laura Dolan and Health Agent Sherry Miller-Badot, and after consultation with the Health Agent Miller-Badot, Health Officer Dr. Quinn, and Police Chief Hegney, the new ordinance below was created. For these reasons and more, I respectfully submit for your consideration and approval a proposed ordinance to restrict the sale of kratom items in the city. This ordinance has been reviewed and approved as a form by the city solicitor. Accordingly, I hereby request your honorable body amend the revised ordinances by adding the following new section, Section 11-24 kratom.
Are you going to read the other headings or?
I'm sorry?
Were you going to read the other headings or not? Just, just kratom?
11-24.1 findings and intent, 11-24.2 definitions, 11.24, 11, 11-24.3 kratom products, 11-24.4 enforcement and penalties, and 11-24.5 effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ordinances, elections, and legislative matters. And Councillor Tavares, would you like to call for a public hearing on November 18th?
Yes, I would.
Second.
Thank you, motion is in order, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
I respectfully submit a communication from Veteran Service Director Ben Quell regarding the donation of $250 in Market Basket gift cards from the public employees Local 1144. In accordance with Section 1-12 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Attleboro, I hereby request your honorable body accept this generous donation to the City of Attleboro.
Human Resources, Veterans, and Human Service Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Community Engagement Manager Kalen Portado regarding a donation of $5,500 from Thrive Downtown Attleboro to purchase Wayfinding signage using the Downtown brand to be placed in the Downtown. With this donation, the city can further complete the recommendation set by the 2022 Wayfinding Study. In accordance with Section 1-12 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Attleboro, I hereby request your honorable body approve the expenditure of such funds and any future amendments to this donation.
Finance Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Human Resources Director Lynn Daven and Superintendent of Water Dennis Morton requesting to add laboratory manager slash water quality specialist position to the classification and compensation plan. Since the department, since the departure of the laboratory manager in May 2025, the water department has taken time to assess its current and future operational needs. Based on this assessment, it has become clear that the responsibilities of the vacant position must be revised to include the critical functions of a water quality specialist. The position for laboratory manager slash water quality specialist will not increase, change, the grade, or salary range of the current laboratory manager position included in the class plan, but simply reflects the change in title and incorporation of duties associated with the water quality specialist. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body add the position of laboratory manager slash water quality specialist in the SATS 1 positions group.
Now, let us go to the special comedian, Class and Comp. And Mr. Angelo, would you like to call for a public hearing on the 18th of November?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Thank you, motion is in order, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
As you may recall, a communication was sent to your honorable body concerning the upcoming retirement of the benefits coordinator. An excellent candidate has now been selected for this role. I respectfully submit a communication from Human Resources Director Lynn Daven requesting funds for a two-month training and overlap period with the current benefits coordinator. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer $6,000 from the Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer account to the Personnel Salary and Wages Full-Time account.
Go to Human Resources, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Water Dennis Morton regarding the need to pay two fiscal year 25 invoices to Tata and Howard. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer $2,340.63 from the Water Enterprise Fund Reserve Fund for Transfer to the Water Enterprise Fund Bills from Previous Year's account.
Public Works Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Director of Recreation Kristi Clausen regarding a trailer that the Recreation Department would like to surplus. There was no interest from any of the other departments. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body to declare the following a surplus and available for disposition. Description is a 2012 rate trailer, utility VIN is 1S9TS2523C1132074, fair condition, estimated value is $1,500.
City Profiting Claims, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Fire Chief Scott Teela Chance regarding the need to pay a fiscal year 25 invoice in the amount of $187.50 to Island Tech Services LLC. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer $187.50 from the Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer account to the fire previous year's bills account.
Public Safety and Emergency Management, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Fire Chief Scott Teela Chance regarding the need to pay fiscal year 24 and fiscal year 25 invoices totaling $412.76 to Debbie's Uniform and Supply. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer $412.76 from the Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer account to the fire previous year's bills account.
Public Safety and Emergency Management, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Waste. I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Waste Water Thomas Hayes regarding the need to purchase a 2025 F-550 Dump Truck. The Waste Water Department's current Ford F-450 Dump Truck has been in service since 2008, and it has reached the end of its useful life. A replacement Ford F-550 Dump Truck is included in the fiscal year 2026-2020-30 Capital Improvements Program. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer one hundred and twenty thousand dollars from Waste Water Enterprise Fund Reserve for Capital Account to Waste Water Enterprise Fund F-550 Services Truck or Similar.
Public Works Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Director of Recreation Kristy Clausen regarding the need to purchase a stand-on hurricane blower. This blower will increase productivity and efficiency within the labor team. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer twelve thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars and nine cents from the Recreation Supplies Equipment Account to the Recreation Blower Account.
Public Works Committee, please.
Sincerely, Kathleen DeSimone, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll now go on to a reading of the clerk's communication.
Communication, October 7th, 2025. We have received a request from National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated to replace pole 8155 on Payson Street and relocate it thirteen feet right up the driveway of House Number 28 Blackmore Road, ultimately removing it from the center of the driveway.
Public Works Committee, please.
We have received a letter from Jack Lang, President and CEO for the United Regional Chamber of Commerce, stating reasons to eliminate a dual tax rate.
Copy to all councilors, please.
We have received a renewal Class 2 license application from Car Town USA Incorporated, 680 Washington Street with nine customer parking spaces and 20 display spaces.
Uh, Licenses Committee, please.
That concludes all communications for this evening.
Thank you. And now we'll go on to the committee reports, beginning with Mr. Cobus.
Thank you. Reporting for the Finance Committee, from the docket of October 7th, 2024, I move to transfer twenty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents from account Health Office Supplies to account Health Bills from Previous Year to pay a fiscal year 25 invoice to Amazon Business.
Second, and it's 2025 now. You said 2024?
Oh, fiscal year 25.
All right. Uh, motion is seconded and is in order. Any comments, Mr. Cobus?
Previous year's bill.
Good. Do we have additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Tenay, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. From the docket of October 7th, 2025, I move to approve the expenditure of such funds and any further grant amendments regarding the anticipated award of the Community Development Block Grant in the amount of seventeen thousand dollars for the Council on Aging to fund the Shine Counselor.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Any comments?
It's the CDBG, uh, money for the Shine Counselor. Uh, anticipated amount, so it hasn't been granted yet, but this is to, once it's available, this is to approve it.
Thank you. Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Tavares.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer? Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Tenay, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
From the docket of October 7th, 2025, I move to authorize the Council on Aging to pay a fiscal year 22 invoice to Verizon in the amount of one hundred and one dollars and sixty-five cents.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Any comments?
Uh, it's a fiscal year 22 bill, so it's a bill that, that was found from a while ago.
Um, additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Tenay, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
From the docket of October 7th, 2025, I move to rescind the appropriation of four million eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars to State and County Assessments and Charges Intergovernmental Council Vote Number 21 from, uh, 61725, and replace it with the following. State and County Assessments and Charges Intergovernmental, total State and County Assessment and Charges, four million seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Any comments?
This is the first of five votes. Uh, we discussed it, um, I guess, two weeks ago now. Uh, this is to account for and up the new growth numbers. And so we're just adjusting the, the overall new growth numbers to account for a conservative initial assessment, where the initial new growth assessment was assessed at roughly one million dollars, and the actual new growth numbers, as, as we saw, uh, in Julie's, uh, tax shift, uh, discussion, came in at roughly 1.5 million. So with that roughly five hundred thousand dollar increase, we have to adjust some of these numbers, and roughly 50% of that new growth, will be distributed to the schools, and then the other half will be distributed, uh, to the city. Uh, but this is just accounting for that, the, these next five, this vote and the, the four after it will be, um, accounting for that. Does that all make sense?
Yep. I would add that we generally do this every year.
We do, yes.
As part of a mechanism to the budgeting, so.
Yep.
But very good explanation. Thank you. Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Tavares.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Tenay, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
From the docket of October 7th, 2025, I move to approve the following supplemental appropriation, one hundred thousand dollars to account Teaching Services Non-Professional Salaries ILA.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Any comments?
Previous comment covered it.
Thank you. Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Tavares.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Tenay, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
From the docket of October 7th, 2025, I move to approve the following supplemental appropriation, fifty thousand dollars to account System-Wide Non-Professional Salaries Other.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Any comments?
It's another school one.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Angel, Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Tenay, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
And from the docket of October 7th, 2025, I move to approve the following supplemental appropriation, one hundred and sixty-two thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars to account System-Wide Professional Salaries School.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Any comments?
It's another school one, and just as a side note, if you see the letter designation at the beginning of the account, those tend to be, uh, school accounts.
Thank you.
Fun fact.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Tavares.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Tenay, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
From the docket of October 7th, 2025, I move to approve the following supplemental appropriation, two hundred and forty thousand seven hundred and six dollars to account Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Any comments?
It's the other half to the city side.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Tenay, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
That concludes the business for the Finance Committee. I call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you. Um, Ms., Ms. Foa?
There is no business from the IT and Infrastructure Committee. Call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you. Counsel Lavoy?
Thank you. Reporting for the License Committee from the docket of September 2nd, 2025, I move to approve the Keeping a Stand in a Public Place License Application from Tavern in the Square of Washington Street, and approve the application to waive Section 11-15.1 to serve alcoholic beverages or wine on city property for an event on October 25th, 2025, at 104 Mechanic Street from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Any comments?
Um, we had the public hearing on this, and of course, Spencer came down. I do have some flyers. I, if you want one, just come grab one after. Um, but it is the grand opening of the Jewelry City Disc Golf, and Spencer was kind enough to allocate the proceeds to the 250th Firework Celebration, um, in July. So, uh, with that, Tavern in the Square was also kind enough to partake and also donate proceeds, and this allows them to be able to sell beer and wine to do so. So I hope everyone can support it and make it out on October 25th, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Tavares.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Tenay, zero nays.
Thank you very much. Motion passes.
Thank you. That concludes the business for the License Committee, and I would call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you. Um, pin shitting for Counsel Reynolds will be Counselor, um, Sawyer?
No, I think it's both.
Counsel, all right, all right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Reporting from City Property and Claims from the docket of October 7th, 2025, I move to declare the following, uh, Council on Aging Equipment as surplus and further vote to transfer this equipment to the North Attleboro Council on Aging pursuant to Section 2-12 Disposition of Property Cantrable Supply Section, Subsection II of the Revised City Ordinances. A majority vote of the Municipal Council is necessary to approve the transfer. The items are one Brother Desktop Printer, uh, estimated value of two hundred and twenty-eight dollars, one Dell Computer Monitor, 24 inches, model 2424H, estimated value two hundred and thirty dollars, one Dell Laptop Computer Latitude 5510, City Tag O242, Intel Core I5, 8 GB RAM, 464 GB SSD, estimated value between two hundred and fifty and four hundred and fifty dollars. Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Any comments?
If we can't use it, let's transfer this property to a agency that can.
Very good. Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Tenay, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes. And Counsel Foa, on this one, you don't need to read the VINs?
Okay.
Just the year, make, model, miles, and condition.
Uh, from the docket of October 7th, 2025, I move to declare the following DPW vehicles as surplus and available for disposition for trade-in value. The 1993 Ford F-800, it has 102,245 miles and is in very poor condition. A 1995 Ford F-800 has 94,212 miles and is also in very poor condition.[1440.88] A 1995 Ford F-800 has 94,212 miles and is also in very poor condition. A 1995 Ford F-800 with 92,786 miles in very poor condition. And a 1997 GMC Dump Truck, I assume that means, with 34,726 miles in poor condition.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any comments?
I have no comments.
Thank you. Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Tavares.
Mr. Tavares, Mr. Waterman, Ms. Sawyer, Mr. Angelo, Ms. Holmes, Vice President Dolan, Mr. Lavoy, Ms. Foa, Mr. Cobus, President Delicio, Tenye Zeranes.
Thank you, motion passes. And you can do the same on this one, Counselor Foa.
From the docket of October 7th, 2025, I move to declare the following police department vehicles as surplus and available for disposition to sell or for trade-in value. A 2014 Ford PI utility with 140,086 miles in poor condition. A 2016 Ford PI utility with 123,657 miles, also in poor condition. All of these vehicles are in poor condition. A 2014 Chevy Impala with 135,048 miles. A 2010 Ford E350 with 117,379 miles. A 206 Ford E350 with 90,290 miles. As I said, all of these in poor condition.
Second.
Motion is in order. Let the record show it's 2006, not 206 Ford F- Ford E- it happens. No one knows that better than I. Additional comments, concerns on this, Counselor Foa?
No.
Additional questions, comments, concerns from the council? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Cobus.
Mr. Cobus, Ms. Foa, Mr. Lavoy, Vice President Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes, Mr. Angelo, Ms. Sawyer, Mr. Waterman, Mr. Tavares, President Delicio, Tenye Zeranes.
Thank you, motion passes.
That concludes the business of City Property and Claims Committee. I call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you, and thank you again for pin shitting for Counselor Reynolds. Vice President Dolan.
Thank you, reporting for the Public Works Committee from the docket of October 7th, 2025. I move to transfer $7,700 from account wastewater enterprise fund reserve fund for transfer to account wastewater enterprise fund bills from previous years for national grid invoices between May 2022 and May 2025.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any comments?
No, we discussed in committee.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Cobus.
Mr. Cobus, Ms. Foa, Mr. Lavoy, Vice President Dolan, Ms. Holmes, Mr. Angelo, Ms. Sawyer, Mr. Waterman, Mr. Tavares, President Delicio, Tenye Zeranes.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you, from the docket of September 16th, 2025, I move to transfer $72.76 from account citywide reserve fund for transfer to account parks bills, previous years bills.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any comments?
No.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Tavares.
Mr. Tavares, Mr. Waterman, Ms. Sawyer, Mr. Angelo, Ms. Holmes, Vice President Dolan, Mr. Lavoy, Ms. Foa, Mr. Cobus, President Delicio, Tenye Zeranes.
Thank you, motion passes.
And that's all the business for the Public Works Committee and I call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you, Counselor Holmes.
Thank you, reporting for Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee. I have one motion from the docket of September 2nd, 2025. I move to approve the following loan order. Order that 717,000 be appropriated for the cost of purchasing and equipping an ambulance. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is authorized to borrow 717,000 under Section 7.1 of Chapter 44 of General Laws or any other enabling authority and that the mayor is authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out this project.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any comments?
Just briefly, we had a public hearing. Mason explained and the chief explained the importance of this and then we just had committee earlier. I would encourage us all to approve this. I give my comments.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Cobus.
Mr. Cobus, Ms. Foa, Mr. Lavoy, Vice President Dolan, Ms. Holmes, Mr. Angelo, Ms. Sawyer, Mr. Waterman, Mr. Tavares, President Delicio, Tenye Zeranes.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you, that concludes the business and I'll call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you, Counselor Angelo.
We have no business for Human Resources and Veteran Services. It calls for a meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you, Counselor Sawyer.
No business for Zoning Land Use and Sustainability Committee. I'll call for a meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you, Counselor Waterman.
Traffic and Transportation is no business this evening. We'll meet at the next appropriate time.
Thank you, Counselor Tavares.
Reporting for ordinances, elections, and legislative matters from the docket of April 1st, 2025, I move to approve the request of the mayor regarding the attached home rule petition. Calling for the establishment of a board to oversee use and occupancy payments for manufactured housing, community accommodations in the city of Attleboro. And Mr. President, may I waive the rest of the reading?
Can you just read from the second paragraph from we moved to the petition, just to the end of the objective of the petition? Thank you.
Home value- home rule petition of the city of Attleboro through its mayor and municipal council. We move to petition the general court to enact the following legislation providing for the establishment of a board to oversee use and occupancy payments for manufactured housing, community accommodations in the city of Attleboro, Massachusetts, with the powers and duties set forth below provided that the legislature may reasonably vary the form and substance of the requested legislation within the scope of the general public objectives of the petition.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any comments?
Yes. So over the past week, I spoke directly with Representative Hawkins about this matter. He informed me that the statewide legislation currently pending before the legislature, which would allow any city or town to establish a board by local option, remains active. Its reporting date, however, was recently extended to October 31st. So you may recall several weeks ago, I had had a conversation with Representative Hawkins that had, he had asked if we would hold on to this business while he was working on that bill that's currently in the legislature. But it looks like there's no resolution in sight as of now. So the Joint Committee on Housing continues to deliberate on that bill that Representative Hawkins has out. And so they are going to provide a recommendation at some point to the legislature on whether to vote up or down. But I want to make clear that I fully support the creation of a manufactured housing board. It's an important measure to help our residents as we've talked about at length in the public hearing and in committee, particularly seniors who are on fixed incomes and, you know, help them to deal with destabilizing rent increases in mobile home communities. However, I do want to note some key differences between the city's home rule petition and the pending statewide bill. So the home rule petition that we're looking at here would apply solely to the city of Attleboro and authorize the city to establish a board with certain regulatory powers over use and occupancy payments of mobile homes as the petition states. The statewide bill, however, is much more robust. So it would amend the general laws to create a uniform framework for any municipality who wanted to adopt it. So it would be an opt-in program. It also includes additional provisions such as a cap on annual rent that's tied to inflation, so through a consumer price index. I think that's important. And it has clear enforcement mechanisms through the Board of Health to suspend or revoke licenses when violations occur. Given that the legislature is already actively considering this broader statewide measure, I do have some concerns about the optics of filing a separate home rule petition on the same subject while that process is underway. And also, if the legislature is inclined to act on this matter, I suspect that they'd be more likely to do so via a local option bill rather than our home rule petition. But that's just my personal opinion. That being said, Representative Hawkins and I are in agreement that supporting this local petition is appropriate and consistent with our intent to protect our residents in manufactured home communities. So while I do recognize the timing overlap and the possibility that the statewide legislation may ultimately render this local act unnecessary, I will support approval of this home rule petition so that the city's position is clear that Attleboro's interests are represented in the ongoing legislative discussion. So I know that was long-winded, but I think those are important things to keep in mind.
Yeah, I agree, I think it's very important. So I want, before we open it up to questions, thank you for your work with Representative Hawkins. I think this partnership between the municipal and the state delegation is really important. My understanding is that there's also a companion piece that would have to, is going to go through the state senate. So I think that could prolong this even further. So I think us acting on this important piece of legislation to protect those seniors who need this is probably pretty prudent at this point. And I certainly appreciate the work you put in on this and your comments. So thank you. Mr. Angelo.
Thank you, President Delicio. Kind of echoing some of your sentiments and just that, well, I'm glad. Thanks, Counselor Tavares, for bringing this out. I feel that we really need to take care of our procedures in the housing around here and not depend on the state to do it. At some point, they will get around to it, but when that happens, we don't know. So I'm happy to support this and I hope we all do. And if it needs to change at a certain point, that's fine, but let's take care of it right now. So thank you.
Very good. Mr. Lavoy.
Thank you, President Delicio. Thank you for your work on this and really thank you for taking it out. I think that, you know, we as a city have an obligation to protect our residents, especially our seniors, and relying on the state to do so might not always be the best case. So just hearing that that got moved to Halloween makes me believe that it will be moved into November at some point. But again, I support this. I think it's definitely the right measure and hopefully the state acts on it. But I just wanted to thank you for putting it out there and not relying on the state.
Mr. Waterman, then Mrs. Sawyer.
I really appreciate this. This is an important move for seniors. And not just for the seniors, but for the caretakers of the seniors. And this will alleviate a problem that's been there for quite a while. So I totally support this.
Counselor Sawyer.
I agree with everything that everybody said. I think we can't wait to put this forward and really help the affordability of housing in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions, comments, concerns? Counselor Holmes.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this out. So sometimes enough cities and towns have to tell the state what we want. And I kind of see this as a message that we want you to kind of move on this. So I think that we have been the leader in some other ways and I think it's important, even I'm thinking of Counselor Lavoy with the chemicals that were being used. Like we're telling the state a message like, hey, like we want you to act on this. So I think it's important to sometimes go up. I guess the only concern I have is if we do do this, would it be a conflict? And what the opt-in, would it be a conflict once that we have to opt in and then we have to then change what we are doing again? Or I don't know, sorry.
So this is where my concern lies. And if I may, before I answer that question, I appreciate all the rest of the council's comments, but this doesn't speed up the process anymore. I mean, and this doesn't even mean that we're not relying on that. The state has to act regardless. The question is, is which will the state act on? Will they act on the bill that's in front of the House and the companion bill that President Delicio mentioned in the senate? Or are they going to consider our home rule petition? And so it's frustrating because at the end of the day, there's no guarantees either way. I mean, they might not move forward with the bill. They may not even address our home rule petition. I mean, this is the second time around. So I think your comment is spot on, Counselor Holmes, that this, the best we can do here is send a message. I think that's what this is doing and nothing else. I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but I think that's the reality.
So I actually have a little bit of a different vantage point than that, right? I don't know if it's bad news, I think it's accurate. What I would suggest is I think this illustrates the importance of that partnership with us and our state delegation to be in communication. And you've already done a nice job of starting that ball rolling in this situation, just to find out where they are. Find out, and I know Counselor Holmes, the last time this was introduced, you were very active in this as well. So I think it's, whatever happens here tonight, if it passes, you know, I would expect that this council would stay on top of this and continue to communicate with reps Hawkins, Scanlon, and State Senator Feeney. So yes, I mean, the news isn't exactly, it's not going into effect tonight. It sends the message that yes, we are in favor of this. We want it to go forward. But I think it's also that great opportunity to partner with our state delegation on this. Counselor Foa.
Thank you, President Delicio. As I understood it, Counselor Tavares, Ms. Holmes', Counselor Holmes' question really was, what if both of these matters pass? What happens then?
I don't know what the legislative, oh, if I may, President Delicio, I don't know what the legislative process is, but I think practically speaking, I just, I don't see that happening. But again, that's just a personal opinion. I haven't, I don't know is the answer.
I would refer to my previous comments about where the communication with us, this body and the state delegation would remain critical in order for us to find out where it's going through. As Counselor Tavares said, this is the second time. So there's no guarantee that this will be approved. There's no guarantee that, you know, we could have a trick or we could have a treat on the 31st. I know you had your hand raised, you have a follow-up?
Uh, no.
Okay. Counselor Lavoy.
Thank you, President Delicio. If I may comment on, I would assume if somehow a miracle happened and the state of Mass and both were approved, the state's program is an opt-in program. So we feel our framework is better, then we don't have to opt into that program. And if we feel the state's program is better than ours, then we could remove this the same way we brought it in and then opt into the state program. So I don't think there'll ever be an opportunity to be in both, per se. I think at that point, we're in a better vantage point than most cities and towns in the Commonwealth that we can then pick which program fits our residents better. Thank you.
I would say we could always engage the city solicitor as well. So we have an option, we can vote this out tonight, get it in front of the state, let that process begin, or we can hold it for two weeks and we get additional questions. But I don't know that, additional questions answered, rather, but I don't know that there's much value in holding it up two weeks. But I would follow your lead on that.
My opinion would be, I don't think that would substantively, I agree with you, President Delicio, I don't think substantively that would change this business. Again, as Counselor Lavoy mentioned, and I probably should have taken that to its logical conclusion, right? I mean, if the legislature does act on the bill that's in the House and the senate to create that opt-in program, that's exactly what it is, right? I mean, we don't have to opt in. I would argue that that's probably a more, the way it's written is a more robust framework for a board than what's presented here in the resolution. But that's a different issue for a different day.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Tavares.
Yes.
Mr. Tavares.
Yes. Probably yes.
Did you say yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer.
Yes.
Mr. Angelo.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Did you say yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Vice President Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy.
Yes.
Ms. Foa.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
President Delicio.
Yes.
That's ten yeas, zero neys.
Thank you, motion passes.
That concludes the business of ordinances, elections, and legislative matters. We call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you.
The special committee on tax payment review has no business this evening. We call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you, Counselor Foa.
The special committee on rules and procedures has no business this evening. Call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Counselor Cobus.
The special committee for the water investigation does not have any business. I think we call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you, Ms. Angelo.
Special committee on classification compensation has no business. We call for a meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you, there is no new business. There is one piece of old business for which we will recognize, Vice President Dolan.
Thank you. I move to rescind the vote of voted 11 yeas, 0 neys to transfer $59 from account citywide reserve fund for transfer to account public works previous years bills for reimbursement for a hoisting license attained in fiscal year 2025. This vote was already taken on September 2nd, 2025.
And then just need to leave the additional points.
And the vote on September 2nd was voted 10 yeas, 0 neys. Tavares absent to transfer $59 from account citywide reserve fund for transfer to account public works previous years bills for reimbursement for a hoisting license obtained in fiscal year 2025.
Second, I'm sorry.
No, no worries. Motion is in order, Vice President Dolan.
So just what I said, this vote was taken a second time on September 16th when it was already done on September 2nd. So we just need to rescind the September 16th vote.
Thank you. Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Cobus.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Ms. Foa.
Excuse me.